Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the City Council Meeting to order for Monday, February 8th, 2021, to order. We have two public hearings this evening. If the clerk can please read Public Hearing Number One.
Public Hearing Number One regarding the redirection of South Street from State Street to Fuller Street, from a two-way street to a one-way street as part of the reconstruction of South Church Street.
Thank you. Can I ask the clerk to please read Public Hearing Number Two?
Public Hearing Number Two regarding the redirection of Barrett and Huron Streets between South Avenue to Park Place from a one-way street to a two-way street.
Thank you. We have ten items for original consideration. The clerk can please read Item Number One.
Item Number One for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the city to enter into a contract with the County of Schenectady for funding under the New York State 2021 Stop DWI Grant Program.
Discussing Committee Without Objection and Consent. Item Number Two, the clerk can please read.
Item Number Two for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the City of Schenectady Police Department to enter into a service agreement with Benchmark Analytics.
Discussing Committee Without Objection and Consent. Item Number Three, the clerk can please read.
Item Number Three for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the utilization of the coronavirus aid, relief, and economic security, CARES Act stimulus funding.
Discussing Committee Without Objection and Consent. Item Number Four, the clerk can please read.
Item Number Four for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of 28 Chesnut Street.
Discussing Committee Without Objection and Consent. Item Number Five, the clerk can please read.
Item Number Five for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of 919 Strong Street.
Discussing Committee Without Objection and Consent. Item Number Six, the clerk can please read.
Item Number Six for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of a vacant lot on 941 Strong Street.
Discussing Committee Without Objection and Consent. Item Number Seven, the clerk can please read.
Item Number Seven for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of 1309 State Street.
Discussing Committee Without Objection and Consent. Item Number Eight, the clerk can please read.
Item Number Eight for original consideration, a resolution authorizing settlement of a claim by Patricia Civitello.
Discussing Committee Without Objection and Consent. Item Number Nine, the clerk can please read.
Item Number Nine for original consideration, a resolution authorizing the City of Schenectady to settle a navigation law case in New York State.
Discussing Committee Without Objection and Consent. Item Number Ten will be taken out of order and presented virtually by Ms. Porterfield. If the clerk can please read.
Item Number Ten for original consideration, a resolution recognizing February as Black History Month.
Thank you. If there's nothing more to come before the City Council Caucus, I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. I would like to call the City Council Meeting to order for Monday, February 8th, 2021, to order. I would like to call and pass to Nicole Harris for prayer invocation. Pastor Harris?
Yes, thank you so much. Let us pray. God, we come before you now asking that you would be with us in this meeting, in this sacred space. Lord, that you would guide our leaders as they make decisions for the entire community. Lord, we pray right now that you would be with us all as we navigate through this season of a pandemic with COVID-19. God, we ask for healing for all those who are dealing with COVID-19, God. And we ask for a special hedge of protection around our first responders as they continue to work to serve the community. God, I pray right now that you would be in the midst of this meeting, God, that all things would be done decent and in order and according to your will. In the name of Jesus, I do pray. Amen.
Thank you. I would like to call Ms. Porterfield to lead the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Michael, can you please complete the roll call?
Porterfield?
Here.
Ms. Ms. Walzunis?
Here.
Ms. Patrick?
Here.
Mr. Palamini?
So before flowers get sycophantic, do we have any proof of the settlement as to whether or not the 90 million people left?
Muteverin?
President. Thank you. We have one out of order resolution this evening, Item Number Ten, a resolution recognizing February as Black History Month. I would like to call Ms. Porterfield to present.
Thank you, Mr. Muteverin. A resolution recognizing Black History Month 2021. Whereas the original theme for Black History Month 2021 is Black family representation, identity, and diversity. And whereas Black History Month first originated as part of initiative by writer and educator Dr. Carter G. Woodson, who launched Negro History Month in 1926. Woodson chose February for reasons of tradition and reform. It is commonly said that Woodson selected February to encompass the birthdays of two Americans who played a prominent role in shaping Black history, namely Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass, whose birthdays are the 12th and 14th of February respectively. Whereas Woodson aimed to reform Black history from the study of two great men to a great race. Rather than focusing on two men, the Black community, he believed, should focus on the countless Black men and women who had contributed to the advancement of human civilization. And whereas Black History Month and throughout the year, we reflect on more than 400 years of Black history in America and communities across the country paying tribute to the generations of African-Americans who struggled with adversity to achieve full citizenship in American society. And whereas the election of Vice President Kamala Harris, the first Black and first South Asian woman, South Asian-American woman to serve in this office, is yet another of the many contributions of Black Americans to this country. Her heritage truly reflects the 2021 Black History theme. And whereas the NAACP was founded in February 12th, 1909, the centennial anniversary of the birth of Abraham Lincoln, the mission is to secure the political, educational, social, and economic equality of rights in order to eliminate race-based discrimination and ensure the health and well-being of all persons. And whereas a statement from the NAACP on the 2020 election included these words. At this historical moment, the voters have made it clear they want a country that works for all people. They want a country that is not broken by racism and bigotry. Now, therefore, be resolved that the mayor, Gary R. McCarthy, and the Schenectady City Council do hereby pause in their deliberations to recognize the 111th anniversary of the NAACP and the month of February 2021 as Black History Month in the City of Schenectady. Mr. President, I'd like to move the resolution.
Second by?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion is passed. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Porterfield, would you like to invite?
Yes, we have Dr. Otto Butler, who's on the line, as well as Pastor Nicole Harris. So give them an opportunity this time to have words.
Pastor Harris?
Hi, hello, everyone. So I'll make it brief. You know, thank you for this, thank you for putting forward this resolution to recognize Black History Month in 2021, Councilwoman Porterfield and everyone, the Mayor McCarthy and all the council members. I think the past couple of weeks have shown to us that we still have a lot of work to do. We've come a long way as a nation to move towards equity for all Americans and all people in this country, but then we still have some ways to go. And so we're very thankful to everyone who's people who have made those sacrifices so that we can live in a world where all children are treated equal and all people are treated equal. I think that there are a lot of people, both Black people and people of different colors, including white people, who have sacrificed to make this a better world and a better country. And I think our country has put forward a very ambitious goal of creating a country where everyone is treated equally and that all humans are afforded a certain level of dignity. So again, I think City Council and the mayor for putting forward this resolution. And as yours, Schenectady NAACP, we'll continue to dedicate ourselves to making sure that this world is equitable for everyone in the city. And I don't know if the new President, President Harris is on, but I'll give her an opportunity to speak.
Yes, thank you so much, Dr. Butler. Just echoing his sentiments and everything that he has said. I thank Dr. Butler for his service as the president of the Schenectady branch of the NAACP. And I'm excited about continuing that work as the incoming president. I want to thank the mayor and the council for recognizing Black History Month. Yes, we do have a lot of work yet to do, but I truly believe that we can do it together. So with everything that the resolution has said, with the election of Vice President Kamala Harris, we see that Black history is still in the making. So Black history, we celebrate Black history, we are making, and we are pushing forward. So I look forward to working together with the council and with the community to continue in the legacy and the foundation that was laid by the founders of the NAACP and by those whose shoulders we stand upon. So thank you again for this resolution and this recognition. Thank you, Councilwoman Porterfield, and all of the members of council, and to Mayor McCarthy. Thank you so very much for this recognition.
Thank you, Pastor Harris. Thank you, Dr. Butler. We have two public hearings this evening. Reminder, we have extended the public hearing comment for the public up to four minutes. I also respect the ask that each member come in directly on the subject matter. Public Hearing Number One regarding the redirection of South Church Street between State Street and Fuller Street from a two-way street to a one-way street as a part of a reconstruction of South Church Street. Ms. Michael, were there any comments submitted for this public hearing?
No, there were not.
Is there anyone who would like to speak on this public hearing?
Yes, I would. This is Ray Gillan. Thank you. I'm Ray Gillan. I live at 830 Karen Wald Lane in the city, proud city resident. I'm also fortunate enough to be the chairman of Metroplex and the county commissioner of economic development and planning. We speak in strong support of this tonight. As you head down a revitalized Lower State Street, you now at the light at South Church cannot turn left. This would allow for a left turn, a one-way street. It really helps us serve all the development that is happening in this area. And right now, it's very difficult to access these developments because you can't go left at the light. First, we have the $40 million Mill Artisan District that's been completed recently. We have the brand-new Seat Center, which is one of the most important job-training facilities in the city and the county on South Church. We have the Armory, which is, as you all know, is now acting as a film studio, brought a lot of people and attention to the community, positive attention to the community. We have the Community College with all the good work Dr. Mono is doing. And we have the $11 million student housing facility that is directly across the street from the Community College. All of these developments strongly support this move and encourage the council to move forward. They all asked me to speak on their behalf tonight. There's a lot of exciting developments happening in this part of downtown, and this is a really important thing. We're very pleased to be working with the mayor, John Clutchio, Chris Wallen, the whole team at the city to continue that development and make this important infrastructure change. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on Public Hearing Number One? Please indicate by raising the hand icon. If there's no other speaker, I would declare Public Hearing Number One closed. Public Hearing Number Two regarding the redirection of Barrett and Huron Street between South Avenue to Park Place from a one-way street to a two-way street. Ms. Michael, were there any comments submitted for this public hearing?
No, Mr. Muteverin, there were none.
Is there anyone who would like to speak on this public hearing?
Yes, I would. Please indicate again if possible. This is Ray Gillan again. Thank you for having me. There is a lot of development going on on Barrett Street as well. In March, we have two city-owned properties that the land bank is taking down. We have The Costumer that strongly supports this move, a very important business in the downtown area. The Live in Schenectady Group is constructing new homes for new residents of the city and existing residents of the city to take advantage of. So there's a lot of development activity going on in Barrett Street. We worked with the council and with the city team a few years ago to make most of Barrett two-way. This is just the last section from South Avenue to Park Place, makes the entire street two-way. We think this is going to be very beneficial to continuing efforts to revitalize the homes and the properties. Some of it had fallen into disrepair. We've really done a lot of work in this quarter. And again, we'd encourage the council to continue their strong support for the redevelopment of this part of Barrett Street and the Little Italy neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on Public Hearing Number Two? Please indicate by raising the hand icon. Seeing none, I declare Public Hearing Number Two closed. Can I have an approval for the minute for January 25th, 2021? Move by? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Ms. Michael, can you read any communication and petition you may have?
Yes. Communications presented to the City Council for Monday, February 8th, 2021. Under official, there were none. Under general, from Dawn DiCarangilio, an email requesting assistance in preventing the mandatory vaccination of the COVID-19 vaccine. From P. D. Boris, an email requesting an environmental study of the impact of salt for snow maintenance and suggestions for other product use. She also suggested that voters decide on the two vacant council seats. She then questioned if dirt bikes, snowmobiles, and tough-terrain vehicles beyond the agenda. She would like to see the background information, evaluation, analysis, recommendations on the legislative reform. From James A. Wilson of the 27th Division, American Legion Post 1002, a letter dated January 29th, 2021, thanking the mayor and city council for the funds received to rent rooms for their meetings as prescribed by law. From Nils Hedlund of the American Legion Post 1485, a letter dated January 31st, 2021, thanking the City of Schenectady for the funds that helped run Post 1485. From Paul S. Zonderman of the Jewish War Veterans of the United States, Schenectady Post 106, a letter dated February 1st, 2021, thanking the City of Schenectady for their generous contributions that will help with the expense of renting space for meetings and for the support of their organization. From Robert S. Alby of the Schenectady Veterans of World War II Incorporated, a letter dated February 1st, 2021, thanking the City of Schenectady for the funds that helped maintain the home of the Schenectady Veterans of World War II Incorporated. Under petitions, there were none. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee reports from my colleagues.
Mr. Muteverin?
Go ahead, please.
So I would like to, I would like to give kudos to Mr. Andrew Colden. In the month of January, I believe we were over $300,000 in property sold, city properties sold. His office works tirelessly to get these properties closed, and he's done a fabulous job as the rest of the team within City Hall. But I think we need to, we need to understand these properties are being sold fairly quickly now. So I appreciate all of the good work and hard work by the entire team at City Hall. So $300,000 is a lot of houses being sold in a very short period of time. So I thought I would bring it up to everyone's attention. So thank you, Mr. Muteverin.
Thank you. Any other colleagues?
Yes, Mr. Muteverin?
Go ahead, please.
Yes, for government operations, I want to say that I've been attending the health disparities meetings regularly. And our last meeting, they brought up the fact that we weren't getting a great number of vaccines. I think the last time it was, I believe, 200. And so there was a concern that we just, we would need more. And so I feel as a council that we should, something we should support, getting more vaccines so more people can get it. And especially, there was a lot of attention talking about underserved neighborhoods, which is the area that purportedly people want to make sure that certain communities get it, but there isn't the ability to get it if we only have 200. So I, as a council, I would like us to work with the county if we have to write a letter of support or whatever we need to do, because there are people who want the vaccine, but unfortunately, because we're getting so few, that's not happening. And my question to the Mr. Keith was, it's not his last name, but my question to Keith Brown was that, why is that? And he said, "It's based on what they say our population is in terms of that." So whatever work we can do to see if that gets increased would be outstanding, because I know I personally am getting calls from people who are qualified in terms of age and also underlying conditions who are seeking to get the vaccine. And I know some people that made an appointment in Utica to take a drive in order to get it. So that was a concern, something that was brought up there. So I wanted to bring that to the council since I, you know, I go to those meetings regularly. And we want to make sure that we're getting the vaccines that we can in our community. So thank you for that, and whatever support we can give to making, getting that increase would be, would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other colleagues? Okay. We'll move into Privileges of the Floor related to Legislative Agenda. Does the clerk have any submission for the Legislative Agenda? And if so, can you please read?
No, Mr. Muteverin, there were no submissions.
Is there anyone in attendance who would like to speak on matter related to the Legislative Agenda? Please indicate by raising the hand icon. Seeing none, I declare this portion closed. Can I have approval for the Legislative Consent Agenda? Motion by?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll move into Privileges of the Floor regarding General City Business. Does the clerk have any submission from the public regarding city business? And if so, can you please read?
Mr. Muteverin, there were no submissions, although I believe there is a few people on the line that did sign up to speak. One of them was Chris White.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Chris White, please proceed.
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. Chris White, 205 Union Street. A bit of quick background. Last week, after decades of no enforcement, dozens of no-standing parking tickets were suddenly issued on Union Street in the Stockade, issued in the middle of the night based on worn-out daily alternate-side parking signs that all the neighbors thought were just defunct because they haven't been enforced in years. In a neighborhood with such an incredible communication network like the Stockade, I really question why was no warning given? But my real question next is, why does this designation even exist? Look, I know parking seems minor, but every decision like this really impacts a lot of lives. And we really want to work with the city on solutions, not just be dictated to based on outdated science. I understand that not everyone who makes these kind of decisions lives in the city, but we do. To put a finer point on it, these are the kind of reasons our friends ask us why we live in Schenectady, why renters, when ready to buy, move to Scotia or Saratoga. I know the council knows that story all too well. Look, I love this city, I really do. I choose to live here, but I just don't understand why living in the city has to be so challenging like this. I'm on every list I can get, but there's no consistent information about anything related to snow. I did however get several invitations to the mayor's state-of-the-city address. Thank you. When I spoke to the Assistant Police Chief about the recent enforcement, he said tickets were a strategy toward compliance. But compliance, why? And how is this bringing any value to the limited taxpayer dollars we have? And fundamentally, how can it work with no consistency? Example, despite what the signed state, apparently it was illegal on Thursday on one side, okay, both sides Friday and Saturday, and then suddenly illegal again, but only on one block Sunday, and then on a totally different block on Monday. What are we saying to the people who live here? Because I'll note that during this time, none of the streets were actually cleared. It's not difficult. For years, I filed complaint after complaint, and they go into some black hole. Same for everyone else I know who's done the same. And as city leaders, I think you should know that the lack of communication and consistency is embarrassing to us in the city. We have solutions for snow removal in place, but the lack of consistent enforcement leads to cycles of apathy and then overcorrection. You want the city, and we do too, to be amazing. You want a smart city with luxury condos and theaters and people coming from around the globe, yet can't figure out how to talk to the people consistently and support them. The petition you've received has dozens of signatures collected in just 48 hours and articulates in great detail why this designation should be removed. We're not questioning the intent of the recent enforcement efforts. We are questioning, however, the foundation on which they stand in the unnecessary headaches, sleepless nights, and absurd hardships they're now going to cause. We want to work together towards solutions, but pun intended, this is not a one-way street. You know where we live. We're here to talk, and we want to work together. Thank you so much for your service, and we really look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you. Robin Stewart, please proceed.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much, mayor and member of the county. I was just listening to this young man speak about the snow removal. And I have to tell you, I've lived in Schenectady, and I don't mean Miss Kuna. I've lived in Schenectady most of my life, from the time I was 18. The way it used to be done was so much more organized. The police were involved. Plowing was involved. It was synchronized. Basically, I can remember them coming by about 7:00 PM or so on different sections of the city on different nights, on following nights. And they would, they would have the police come by with their speakers on saying- And they would, they would have the police come by with their speakers on saying, you need to remove your cars temporarily while the street is plowed. If you do not do so, you will be ticketed and towed. Now that, to me, made a lot of sense, because then people came out, they moved their cars, the snow was removed, and everybody was happy because both sides of the street were cleared and people could drive and not be impeded. People could park. I walk by and I see these cars parked, and they have, it's like little parking spots where they have a big bank of snow in front of a car and a big bank of snow behind a car. And that's because these cars were not systematically, you know, dealt with. You know, something around 7:00 PM for most people would be fine. And but if, you know, if everybody knew, if everybody was informed that this type of snow removal would be in place, then you would have people understanding. When we hear the police's speaker, we're going to go move our cars, no matter whether it's a pain in the butt because we just got in bed or we just got out of bed, we're going to go move our cars and within twenty minutes, our street will be clear and we won't have to worry about it. So there you go. That's my, that's my input.
Thank you. Suzanne Unger? Please proceed.
Hello. Hi, sorry, I muted myself. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening about an urgent matter affecting many Stockade residents. My name is Suzanne Unger. I live at 216 and a half Union Street, and I'm president of the Stockade Association. On February 5th, residents with cars parked on the north side of Union Street awoke to find thirty-five-dollar parking tickets on their car windshields. After a day of phone calls to the city and the police, we were informed that the city had decided to start using regular patrol officers to enforce the alternate side parking regulation that had not been consistently enforced for many years. While Assistant Police Chief Daryl Mallard disputed this claim, I know from direct experience that few, if any, tickets were issued on our block to me or any of my neighbors on Union Street for six and a half years. This change in policy was enacted with no warning to the neighborhood. I understand that the city is looking for ways to improve snow plowing and removal during the winter months. However, effectively removing half of the parking spaces on Union Street year-round creates many more problems than it solves. Parking is, first of all, very limited in the Stockade, and people struggle to find adequate parking as it is. Removing these spaces will make it virtually impossible for many to find legal parking places a reasonable distance from their homes. Illegally parked cars block intersections and driveways, reducing or eliminating sightlines, thus creating dangerous conditions. Given the amount of speeding along Union, any collision due to blind spots could be quite serious. Third, this is an equity issue. We are a diverse neighborhood, and not everyone can afford to rent a private parking space or a garage. On Saturday, February 6th, at 8:30 PM, most of the cars were parked on one side of the street and the other side was empty. In a matter of ten minutes, I saw four or five cars speed faster than ever because now the street was wider than ever. Our suggestion is that the city instead enforce the current regulations in place for snow emergencies. The Stockade Association works hard to remind residents of the rules, and while some people do not move their cars, most do. Residents know they risk a tow if they can't remove their cars. When that doesn't happen, some residents begin to ignore the rule. Enforce the rules that are in place now for snow emergencies. And then we ask for the removal of the very old signs regarding alternate side parking and the signs for a two-hour parking limit. Neither is appropriate for this densely populated residential district. I ask you to give Stockade residents a break. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this matter? Christopher Marnie, would you like to speak?
No, thanks. I'm just listening.
Thank you. Carol, would you like to speak?
Oh dear. I thought I was just listening in.
Okay.
I'm good.
Is there anyone else? Please indicate. If not, I declare the privilege of the floor regarding general city business closed. Thank you. Miscellaneous business from my colleagues.
Mr. Mutiveren?
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank the folks that came on tonight to talk about the parking situation. I know that most of us have gotten emails or phone calls or both regarding that. And, you know, it's, it's winter, so we're definitely in challenging times. And I, as I understood, Mrs. Unger talked about having a meeting. And so I just want to say again, if that's, if the meeting takes place via Zoom or in person, I certainly would be willing to come to that. And so we could talk about some possible solutions. And, and maybe it sounds like, based on what I'm hearing, that it's a time to look at the signage and see if it really meets the, the needs of the residents who live in the Stockade today. So thank you for coming and voicing your concerns and sorry that, for that major inconvenience that took place. I have several announcements. As you know, it is Black History Month, and we just had a resolution for that. And I want to tell, say that the Hamilton Hill Art Center is having ongoing events, virtual events throughout the month, and you can find out that information on their, their website to take place. And of course, everything is free. There's, there's no charge for anything. And also in February, it's also Women's Heart Health Month. So just reminding women, you take care of your heart, you eat healthy, because it's important. That's one of the things that we take a lot of, and you're it. And the NAACP this month is having Mr. Butler on. We will leave, Kamala Harris will be coming in. So we're in, 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 so we're in,